And Zone Six. So with that, can I have the three of you come to the center while we, I'm gonna do the honors, because we do all need to take an oath. So if you guys want to stand on that side, I think we can get a very good picture of you. So with your right hand up for me. Aye, and then state your name. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Oregon.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Oregon.
And that I will well and truthfully. Perform the duties of board member. Of Central School District thirteen J. For the best of my abilities, so help me God. Perfect. Now I will give you each a piece of paper that I need you to sign. Yeah, then I will, we will be almost sworn in.
All right, well, Dawn and Peggy, thank you. Byron, welcome. Good to have you. Good to have you all again. So in July of each year, we nominate and vote on our officers, so our Chair and our Vice Chair. It's typically a nomination process, and anyone can offer a nomination. And we'll take a few minutes and discuss it. I think if someone is nominated, it's probably appropriate for that person to just acknowledge and state their willingness to serve in either of those capacities. Any questions about the process? I looked at the policy and it's, you know, it's pretty general. I mean, it basically says what I just, in July, and the process is how I described it. So I'll open it up for discussion and potential nominations.
Yes, Jan. I have some nominations I'd like to make, but I'd like to preface it with a few comments. Last year was a very, very difficult year. And I believe that the wisdom and guidance that you and Peggy provided was excellent. We are starting out what we hope will be a normal year. The road yet is not paved. And I know that if we have two people who have the experience of walking on that rocky road, it will be better for the children of this district and for the employees of this district and for the people in our community. And that's my mission as a board member. And I also want anybody else on the board who wants to be nominated or would nominate themselves, that I absolutely respect every single person on this board. So this is not a nomination made lightly. I just think it's logical for the school district with the children as the number one priority. And that's why I think a year of, I'm sure, extremely difficult experiences that you two went through. And I also know you did so many things behind the scenes that the rest of us, or some of us anyway, don't know about. And I, I make this recommendation, I hope intellectually and not emotionally. And it's my role as a board member to do what I believe within the scope of board members, which is not operations, but it's policy and supervising the superintendent that, that's where I stand, sir.
You forgot to make the nomination.
I didn't nominate.
You implied it.
Well, aren't I a clever person? Then I, I would like to formally nominate Steve to be Chair. And if it's appropriate at this time, Peggy to be co-chair. If I need to wait to make that nomination, I, I certainly will. And I apologize. I thought I made it clear, but.
It was clear, it just wasn't stated.
So much for that.
Yeah, well, thank you for that, Jan.
So I nominated.
That's appreciated.
And I'd like to clarify, because I heard Peggy as co-chair, and we don't really have a provision for that office.
I think I need to go back and read the rulebook. Thank you, yes.
Any other board member comments or nominations?
Was there a second?
And we don't actually have to do that, but by policy, we do not have to do that, but that's okay. But it's Robert's rules, yes, but by policy, we do not, we're not required to.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Is that you at all?
Okay, yes, that's, sorry, just joined in. I couldn't get through for some reason, but I figured it out. I caught the tail end of Janice's nomination, and so this for board chair?
Yes.
Okay, and the current nominations are for, for Steve, correct?
Yes, it's for both myself and Peggy to, to stay in the Chair and Vice Chair for another year.
Oh, I thought there was a change of it coming.
But it's, it's open at this time at all for nominations, so. That we, we stay, but.
I was gonna say, historically, we have had the Vice Chair move to the Chair position and a new Vice Chair come on board, but the, the nomination is for you, the two of you to stay in your current positions, so just.
Okay, gotcha. So are we voting for, for Vice Chair as well, or just Chair?
I think we'll do them one at a time, and I'm just waiting, looking at the board here to see if there's any other comments or nominations at all.
Oh, gotcha. Well, I, I thought for some reason that you were going to be no longer Chair. If it's the case that you are available to be Chair again, then I would stand with that.
No, it's, it's traditional for the Board Chair to serve two one-year consecutive terms, just to give some continuity. And then, as Dawn said, for the Vice Chair to rotate in, and it's a best practice, it's not by policy, so.
Yeah, by policy, no one, no, no one board member can go for more than four consecutive years. So from a policy standpoint, that is where the policy is written.
I personally think it's healthy to rotate it every two years, but I'm also open to serving another year. So, but I, I think it's, it's a good practice to try to do.
It would be nice, it would be nice for you to have another year with like a normalcy, rather than the year that it's been in the past.
What exactly is a normal year?
Not COVID year.
Byron, did you have a question or a comment?
I was just gonna nominate Darcy Kurt for the Board Chair.
Okay.
If she's willing.
So we have a nomination for Darcy as the Board Chair? Is there a second? I guess we don't need to do that, but.
Was that, was that not an acceptance, Darcy?
Yes, I'm very interested. I believe it would be a learning curve for me, but I'm not afraid to learn, and I know there are good people who would support me. I will second myself. You can?
I'm actually not a hundred percent sure then, but, but the next step is from Robert's rules. So we have the two nominations. Yes, Jan?
Well, if nominations are closed, so you would make sure that there are no other nominations either for Chair or Vice Chair, and then you would close the nominations?
And then?
And then I would, and then vote. Only one nominee, and then you would vote on the Chair.
So could we not vote for a Vice Chair? Or nominate a Vice Chair after this?
Nominations are still open. They haven't been closed. So if there are any other nominations either for Chair or Vice Chair, they should.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Well, I would like to nominate Darcy for, for Vice Chair. She would be great in either position. Steve, to step into the role of Chair in the, in the next. It's got a great voice in the community, but.
So we have two, two nominations for Chair, Darcy and myself, and two nominations for Vice Chair, Darcy and Peggy. Are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, we'll close nominations at this time, and we will, yes, Jan?
Probably just because I am a bit of an academic, I read parts of Robert's Rules of Orders recently. And it uses the word ballot. And a ballot is a piece of paper. And I know that in the last number of years, we have voted with a hand. And I would like to at least offer the consideration of a paper ballot. We have very qualified, fine people nominated. I don't want to see this board divided. And if we have private pieces of paper that are folded, and we give them to whoever our secretary is tonight. To, okay, to, to a person probably with a witness, that will keep the votes private. Then our board can get behind whoever is elected. And we don't have to deal with feelings of so-and-so did this, so-and-so did that. And Robert's Rules of Orders says the word ballot. Hence, I will present a suggestion.
Who's our, who's our public meeting expert, though? Can we do that in a public meeting? Is that?
Yeah, by Robert's rules, you are allowed to either do it via hand vote or by ballot.
And in the past, in the before times, I have seen school board members write things down on pieces of paper.
And there's actually a third option where you have a nomination committee that, but that process can start earlier in the year. But that's the other option you can use, but that's not, during this, for, yes, does not apply currently.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Okay.
Is there anybody else?
I would, I would hope that, that, that we're all on a team together that would not. I mean, feelings are feelings, of course, but I mean, I think that we're all at a professional educational level to where things aren't always going to line up with what our feelings are. And, you know, we should just do a vote to what we have in the past.
With all your, your suggesting, we just do it, how we've done it in the past, just everybody.
That's what I, that's what I'm suggesting.
As opposed to a ballot.
Well, number one, because I'm not present.
You do have access to a chat that could privately go to Jared, of which I believe Cece could go take a view of that, if she is being our person. So that is an option to be able to do it from a virtual standpoint.
Okay, I, I still stand by, you know, my, my hope and. Could work together to support any person. I mean, we've had to do that in the past, even at the national level. You know, that was evident in the last presidency. I think that we could find a way to, to still support each other and whoever's in the seats. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I think that's one of the operating principles we have as a board, is that we support the decisions of the board. So I, I think we've got probably consensus that we could do the ballot. And with all, if you could do the chat, and we'll go ahead and write down both positions.
I can do that.
The doll, send that chat just to me. You should be able to see me on there so that it, it isn't part of the regular public record. If you do, just drop down to me.
I see, I see the little three dots, and then it says chat.
Just drop down to Cecilia Coats, and I'll record your vote, and I'll have Jared confirm that I recorded it correctly.
So we are voting for Chair and Board Chair. Wrong. I don't know what's the matter with you.
Yeah, I might as well just do this one ballot.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Cece, I sent mine in.
Thanks, Adele, I got it.
Thank you.
I'll have Jared verify that.
See who's gonna get voted off the island.
Or off the boat.
I, I thought we, somebody would get a rose or something like that. That's a different, that's a different show.
It's a way different show.
I don't watch any of them, so it's on, new to me.
Evolved, but all you're missing out, we've actually got people here tonight. It's the first time in well over a year.
That's awesome. So I see hands in the air. I love it. Thank you for, for coming. I was relieved to know that my, my dress rehearsal doesn't actually officially start for another forty-five minutes.
So they're all looking at us like, what, what are you guys doing? Give us an A for transparency.
I'm also not appearing on screen because I'm in my, my costume, and it's supposed to be top secret until showtime.
Want to turn your camera on just for a minute?
I would get in trouble from my director. I was told that I was not allowed to, to show my identity on stage until showtime. But you can see on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at First Baptist Church, eight thirty PM. Arts Integrated Ministry, production of Geppetto, Magical Tale of Pinocchio. Public service.
Can we get a backstage pass?
Absolutely.
Don't you have a hand, Dawn?
So we have votes in, so our Chair for the, I almost said twenty twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two school year, Steve will continue, and our Vice Chair will be Darcy for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So that is our leadership for the board.
Great, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to all, and thank you so much.
All right, that brings us to communications from the floor.
Yes, and we have several in, in, in-house of this today, so we are going to start off first with Mr. Ed Probst. He is here to address the band program in Central School District.
Good evening, members of the board. Though I'm pretty sure most of you know me, I should introduce myself. My name is Ed Probst. I've had the distinct honor of being the band director for the Central School District for the last fifteen years. In this time, I've taken the band program from a small neglected program without adequate equipment, a wildly chaotic music library, and poor student dedication to one that has thrived, upgraded rare and expensive equipment, and has very dedicated students, and is known and loved by the people of these towns. When I started, the CHS Band Room had kind kids who loved each other, but generally couldn't read music. These days, my kids do both. I also say that these days, like many other things in society, the band program of the CS, band programs of the CSD are recovering from the coronavirus pandemic. At CHS, where band students were eventually allowed to meet in person, we were able to pull off a few pet band performances this year, and the kids that came to class in person passed their classes. At TMS, where band classes were not allowed to meet in person, even after in-person learning was granted to academic classes at school, the ratio of students passing band class was far less favorable. At TM, or sorry, coincidentally, my numbers at CHS next fall resemble the numbers of a normal school year. At TMS, sorry, at TMS, where there was no opportunity for live instruction, my numbers are bad for next fall. I bring this up to illustrate that band is an in-person class, and that kids that needed it the most didn't get it this year. Band may not be particularly important to your average student, but to those in the program, it can be the very reason they show up to school. It was for me when I was young. In a year when it was hard to get distance learners to show up to school, with in-person instruction being the best way to correct instrumental technique, my program at TMS suffered and needs to be rebuilt. The good news is that I've, I've rebuilt the program from neglect. Rebuilding it from Corona is not going to be as difficult a task. But I'm not here to just tell you how the band program is doing. I'm here with my eye on the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Because by that time, TMS numbers will be somewhat back to normal, and the issues of my one-man department being wildly understaffed will reemerge. I'm here to beg you to hire a second band teacher for our district after the next school year. I have many reasons. The first is competitive. I have been asked year after year to compete against more staffed and more funded programs since we left the Valco League many years ago. Our towns are growing, and our student population is growing, but my department has stayed the same size. I'm now competing against schools of which only one, Silverton, to my knowledge, has a band director that goes to two schools. And that band director only teaches one middle school class because he's got another band director down there to work with. On the other extreme, we are competing against North Salem, a high school with four band classes, full funding, an army of support staff during athletic band seasons, including section coaches. I'm the only one in our league splitting schedule evenly between two schools. That's not to say that my efforts are in vain in the competitive realm. While we were in leagues with comparable band director assignments, we may not have won, but we would always be in the top three to four. We did take home the league jazz band championship. We're also competing in jazz these days against schools that have middle school jazz bands to feed their high school programs. Where in our district, I try to catch them up on the mislearning the best that I can and still have a successful jazz band. At TMS, we also have a beginning band that, aside from coronavirus years, is usually forty to sixty students in one class. This clearly needs to be two classes during a regular school year. If at TMS, we added a lunchtime jazz band and split beginning band into two, normal numbers providing, and added a guitar class, that's a full-time position. Beyond My Classroom is another competent and excellent music teacher that I share students with. Jeff Witt has taken home state trophies twice in my recollection. Each time, there were at least eighteen students shared between my symphonic band and his symphonic choir. When band kids take choir, they get better tone and air control in my class. And the choir gets better music reading, giving them the ability to rehearse more music than if there weren't band students in there. And it also helps them play high, place higher in the sight-reading portions of the state choir competitions. I'd also like to take and, uh, talk about instrumental music classes that are more based on life enjoyment and employable instrument realms. I see this as a vocational teaching experience. Many of you know that I play in various professional groups in the Willamette Valley. I'm a touring musician. I play jazz, funk, reggae, folk, country, and many other niche musical ensembles. What do all these ensembles have in common? Dedicated guitar, bass, and drum set players. What have we never had in the Central School District? Guitar, bass class, or a drum set class? Yet we're looking for electives every year. For the record, I received permission this morning from Perry LaBouny to have the middle school begin a guitar class next fall. So I'd like to thank Mr. LaBouny publicly. If at CHS, we were able to add a beginning guitar and bass class, a beginning drum set class, and a small ensemble class, that would allow for rock band or chamber ensemble study. I believe they would fill up, and a band director would be a one-building full-time position. As it stands right now, whenever I bring these ideas up to administration, they only speak of the numbers of students currently attending my classes. I don't hear acknowledgement of the built-in catch-twenty-twos that keep my numbers fairly steady over the years. I have talented kids that just get tired of learning the same thing from the same guy for years on end. And I'm overworked trying to keep the programs running the way that they are. I'd also like to say that as a guy split between two schools, I'm part of two schools, but feel like a complete member of neither. Did you know that due to the CHS schedule, I haven't been to a TMS staff meeting in person in years? That's a lot of school information to miss out on. I find myself behind on school-wide practices and procedures. Things that get covered in every other classroom sometimes come up when kid asks why I'm not talking about something that all the other teachers have been working on. I don't have a PSP or a pride period. Since the assemblies at CHS have traditionally been in the morning, and the TMS assemblies have been in the afternoon, I have only been at CHS assemblies that the band was specifically requested, and I arranged a sub. I've been to one or two assemblies at Talman's Middle School. I've been there fifteen years. Think of how many shared school moments I've missed out. Think of how many year-end slideshows, goofy assemblies where the kids get to know their teachers better, and student recognitions I've missed. Like I said, I'm a staff member at both schools, but I do not feel like a whole part of either. At the start of the pandemic, I was able to get in on meetings for both buildings for the first time in my career. Then last fall, both schools started again in the, started scheduling meetings at the same time, and I was in the same situation all over again. No other teacher in the district has had to deal with this particular issue. Being at two schools also means I'm going to twice as many open houses. I prepare twice as many classrooms, and I will close down twice as many classrooms at the end of the school year. I eventually raised enough of a fuss that I didn't have to go to more parent-teacher conference nights than anyone else. But now every year, I have someone at either school upset because they came by on the night I was in the other building, and they couldn't talk to me. Part of both teams, but I'm a member of neither. There are teachers that I've worked with in the same building as myself for years that don't know who I am. I'm humbly asking the school board to strongly consider adding a full-time instrumental music teacher to Central School District for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. This isn't just about keeping an employee here in the district. It's an investment in a growing competitive music program, strengthening our choir program, enriching the. It's an investment in a growing competitive music program, strengthening our choir program, enriching the lives of so many children here in our community. It's also about adding electives because, to my knowledge, there are around six hundred students at C H S that have a ninety-minute study hall in their next school year. I'm asking this because band is the anchor that keeps so many of our students connected to our school system, and it's a financial investment that will pay off in the budget as well as kids' lives. I'd be happy to speak to any of you over the summer. I'll check my school email often. Please drop me a line if you'd like to talk. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Yes?
We can make some comments.
I'm sorry, what? You don't have to, because you can hear me probably. I, um, I don't have questions. I just have comments in that, um, I absolutely support budget-dependent, obviously, on another band teacher. Uh, I've seen the benefits that happen in our music programs. I realize that music is important to so many of our kids. They've got their ears plugged in, listening to music. And I, i-if it's affordable, I, I think it's long past due.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jen.
You're welcome.
I would, I would agree with, uh, with Jen. Uh, Ed, you know, I'm a, I'm a huge fan of what you've been doing at the school for even long before I was even a part of, uh, the board.
Thank you so much.
Uh, I really, really did not see, I mean, the way you, you split up your day and, and illustrated it for us. I mean, that's, I feel bad that you aren't able to have that, that relationship. I mean, I know you have great relationships with your kids, but I mean, there's a whole nother dynamic when you're able to stay in one school. And I think that, again, also find any way to fit anything in the budget, you know, part-time, full-time, whatever. Anything to lighten your load so that we can, you know, focus on, on those other programs that I know as a musician myself that are needed to, to not only get kids to come to school, but to continue their, their passion for the arts. Both like you mentioned, uh, inquire, theater, band. All of those tie in together, you know, and you're right, I see a lot of the same kids, uh, in the theater acts that are playing saxophone or their drums or they're cheerleading, cheerleading drummers. And, uh, it's just amazing to me what you've done. I think it's fantastic and, and it's not lost on me whatsoever. Or I don't think really of anybody, uh, what you've done and what you've achieved, and I think I know that you were unable to, I, I forwarded a few things from you for, for the O S B A conferences, and you told me flat out, you, you don't have the time. You can't, you don't have the time to build such a thing to send over there.
That's absolutely the kind of thing I really want to do. I want to show off the, the pet band that this school has is
Heck, yeah.
Unique and special, in my opinion.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to reiterate what, what
But all, let me jump in real quick. We're kind of walking a fine line. Personnel kind of matters, so I, I, I think it was a great update, Ed, and really appreciate you sharing what you shared. What we might do as a board is follow up at some point and as a, talk about overall electives and C T E-type programs and where band fits into that as we get ready for next year's budgeting cycle. I think that would be the way to handle this board, because we don't get involved in, you know, individual staffing decisions. But we do have an interest in seeing how the resources are being used in the areas that you're talking about, so. That's, that's fine with all, that's.
I'll be here for, uh, anybody who wants to talk about it.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Add one thing, I, what you do is so important.
Thank you so much.
My dad was in seven buildings and hired and fired and moved and as a music teacher, and it was really hard growing up to watch that.
I'm sorry.
Just, I really, yeah.
Means a lot. It happens to us a lot.
It does, I know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Anything else? Thank you so much.
Next up, we have, uh, Jeannie Scott, and she's here to talk about COVID restrictions for the twenty one, twenty two school year, if she is present. Mr. Pressler, is she online? Okay. All right, we will move on. Next is Mr. Beau Clark, uh, to talk about, if he is present, to talk about mask requirements for students. Okay, we'll go to the next one. The next one I have is Curtis Nelson, uh, who is here to talk about athletics, activities, culture, and community involvement.
Hello, thank you guys for having me here today. I appreciate it. Um, I wholeheartedly agree with, 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 with what Mr. Probst just said. Um, I want to start off by thanking everyone here for allowing sports last year and being involved and, um, allowing that to happen. There were so many children in our community that needed that outlet, and that was a huge thing for them. However, today I'm here because overall, I believe there is a disconnect between the community and the school district. Because of this disconnect and decisions of this school board and district, we have moved our youngest child to Saniam Christian. We did so because our daughter needed to be in school. She needed to be in person. This district did not make that happen and did not make it a priority. Last year, we had multiple athletes and students transfer, I believe because of the lack of support and strategic planning by this district. It saddens me to say, but we have also filled out an intent to transfer for our son who is at the high school. He doesn't want to leave his friends or this community. So we are looking for reassurance that this school board is going to get our kids back to school in person, provide the support for the activities and the sports. And, uh, as we know, sports have always been a pride and enjoy of this community. We also want to assure, we also want assurance that you'll keep politics out of education. If you really believe in the whole child concept, as educators and parents, you know that activities and sports are some of the main reasons kids come to school, just like Mr. Probst said. It seems like the last three to five years, Central has not supported these programs. I look at Dallas High School and I see they're building a brand-new C T E building, and they recently added a new turf field. This shows that Dallas is really focusing on their children. You spent a lot of money on an online program that we know has had many issues. A recent poll came out recently showing that a very small percentage of families are even wanting to use it. You also purchased a new district building and have sunk a lot of money into classrooms and interactive whiteboards that a lot of teachers don't even know how to use and they don't want to use. This gives me a major concern when so many other programs don't have the funding that they need. Today, we have to ask ourselves, why does our baseball program have to utilize a nonprofit organization for funding? Isn't that what this district is supposed to do? Again, this district really believe, if this district really believes in the whole child concept, why are there so many programs that are going unfunded or, excuse me, underfunded? Now, I have a few questions I'd like to ask you guys, if that's okay. Referring to the athletic director position, we know that Mr. Malley put a lot of time and effort to help this district. I would like to know what the plan is going forward for the part-time athletic director that we have currently, and, um, and why you guys decided not to fund that fully.
We won't entertain like a dialogue right now, but you can ask these questions and we'll follow up with you separately.
Perfect. I'll, I'll send you guys an email after that, or after this.
And, and just to be clear, the board does not make personnel decisions like that.
I understand that. Okay. I'm just trying to bring it to light. Thank you. Um, I'm concerned because of the, the funding that you guys currently have for the, uh, next three years on that athletic director position. It feels like it's a Band-Aid. Um, I'm also, I also have concerns about hiring. Obviously, I won't go into specifics of that, but I feel like our school district doesn't have the coaches that a lot of the other schools do have and that we are not, what's that?
It's just a reminder for us. Keep going.
Oh, sorry about that. Okay. Um, to me, I feel like educators and coaches are, go hand in hand. I feel like, you know, it, it's the best bang for the district's, uh, money. Why are we not trying to specifically hire coaches that are educators or educators that are coaches? It seems like to this school district, it is a detriment and not a benefit. Also, the other concern is all these students that are transferring out of our school district. Currently, not only my son has signed an intent to transfer, but there are five other students that we know personally. This is becoming an ongoing problem. I hope that the school district and this board specifically are looking at this problem. We, we hope as a community that you guys are willing to go above and beyond and set a standard, set a standard for all these programs. As Mr. Probst just said, why are we not setting a standard and trying to maintain that standard and provide and budget for all these programs? I think I'll leave it at that today because I have quite a few other questions, and so I'll go ahead and email all you guys those questions. So if you would, please take a time and respond if you may, and
If you're going to talk personnel, why don't you send it to info@central? Because that'll come directly to me.
I'm not going to talk, talk directly about personnel, but I'm going to talk about a lot of the community, uh, concerns. Thank you guys for your time.
Great. Yep, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
A way to get involved.
Sure.
As a parent, getting involved with the Panther Club auction would be awesome.
Agreed.
You can come to me for that.
Thank you, guys.
And then our last, oh, excuse me, our last one, although it says she was joining by Zoom, and I do not have a last name, Vanessa. So I'm going to look at Mr. Pressler. No? That is our last, um, speaker for tonight.
Okay. Thank you for that. So that'll take us into our standing reports and programs, and we will start with our financial reports.
Attached to your agenda this evening was the appropriations report. Again, uh, these are, numbers are really just as of, uh, six thirty, but they are unaudited, so I kind of tried to catch up as much as I could to see where we were, and as you can see, in, in this report, again, to remind you is really to make sure that we are maintaining within the appropriated dollars. And every category that was appropriated is well within. Yeah, no changes significant from prior periods.
Is the expectation that we will spend out those dollars or is that a carryover?
Right. Now, this, um, this really was, there'll be some audited adjustments to these numbers. These won't be the final numbers, but there will not be any more significant expenses. So basically, this becomes the carry, part of the carryover picture, exactly. And as we've said all along this year, we knew it's going to be significantly larger than prior years. This includes, uh, for example, the, the two, or the seven thousand funds are those unappropriated expenditures. We wouldn't be expending those in a future year. That's things like our sinking fund for the, uh, to pay off our full faith and credit loan um, and these other contingencies as we carry forward. So not that we would be spending that much more in the following year. But that, though, that was, those balances were used as we did our budget projections.
Thank you, Cece. Any other questions? Were you, were you going to do the capital maintenance and capital projects update or is that?
Uh, we don't have anything for you, uh, yet today for maintenance and capital. We're not doing very much maintenance this summer because we have kids in all the schools, which is awesome, so.
Plus, you had all last year to do it.
Plus, uh, we, we basically, yes, told the maintenance department that if they didn't get it done uh, before March of this year. No, so, uh, and as far as long-term capital projects, we'll be reporting on that in a little bit.
Great, thanks, Cece. And that brings us to our equity committee report.
Yeah, and I'm just going to do a quick up, update. Uh, we, as, uh, on June twenty third, the district uh, Equity Committee and representatives from the Building Equity Committee started training in partnership with Western Oregon. Uh, that training was one day, and then that training will continue during the week of August sixteenth. Uh, so we'll continue that. And then we also, uh, there's a small subcommittee of that district equity team that met. Uh, I want to believe we were the end of June to develop some equity definitions for Central School District. The purpose of this, we want to be able to put the definitions, um, on our website, as well as the purpose of the district equity team. Um, and there, if you go on the district website, there's a district equity and access website, so we'll just be, uh, continuing to build that to help with the learning. Uh, again, we feel it's important definitions and those learning tools for not only, again, students, our staff and the community, but that's really one of the great places we can do that, um, holistically. So we met for about almost four hours, uh, and have a, a fair amount of definitions that, um, again, in collaboration with different universities, looking at different tools across our region, uh, in the area, and developing that, uh, again, for, uh, just as a learning tool for our community, our students, staff and family. So, uh, we will continue forward with the work through the twenty twenty one school year, and we'll continue to update the board as appropriate.
Great. Look forward to that. Keep.
Yeah, so I'm going to have, uh, as, uh, Mr. Pressler just pulls up a quick, short, uh, presentation before we get going on that, I just want to take a minute, uh, because we do have some of our new staff that has joined our team. So, um, you'll get to see a lot more of him, but I just want to put a, a face with a name finally. So, uh, joining us this evening in the back with the rest of my, uh, leadership team at the district office uh, is Brian Flannery, who is the new Director of Student Growth and Achievement, so we're really excited to have him on board. And, uh, especially Julie and myself, uh, his impact already is, is, uh, with our team on the teaching and learning side. Uh, he is, uh, going to fit in beautifully, has already done some, uh, really good things with, um, our, in combination with our, uh, student investment account, looking at our continuous improvement plan in our district strategic plan, which we all have really done it. We've done a really good job of blending and braiding together. So, uh, we'll continue to, you'll get to hear more from him as we start the school year, uh, and on the teaching and learning side as we move forward. So, uh, welcome to the school district, Brian.
Yeah, welcome.
Okay, if we're, I'm going to just, just some highlights, uh, to start. So I'm going to just start with summer school. We have been up and running. We are in week three. Uh, and it has been, uh, phenomenal. We have over across K twelve, almost four hundred students involved. A majority of them are at the K five, uh, level. Uh, so that's been just exciting. Again, that's a mix of, uh, learning in the morning, so academics in the morning, really focusing on, uh, two key areas, reading and math. Uh, really reading, because we do have, want to, uh, make sure our students are moving forward. Um, and then the afternoons are full of enrichment. So if you, uh, drive by Ash Creek or the Ash Creek Annex, there are students just, uh, indoors, outdoors, doing different activities. Uh, and I want to say we are, uh, thankful for the partnerships with Western Oregon, and I'm just going to name a few. The Y M C A and the, uh, Community Services Consortium for their, their partnership. I'm looking at Ms. Howman. Is there anything else you want me to add? And the gate has been a huge part. Thank you for that. Uh, so we've just been excited. It's been, uh, short learning curve. Again, we all know the funding came, uh, quite late and we did planning, but, uh, with Director Howman's leadership and her team, uh, it's just fun to see the students learning and, and doing some fun activities. So that's the, the first part. Next slide for me, please. Uh, the next one, as we continue to plan through for the twenty twenty one school year, this is just, I'm going to continue to show, show you data. Um, this is specific to July, uh, sixth. Uh, you're going to hear me continue to talk about tools in our toolbox. Uh, some of those will not go away, even as we go in person. Uh, you're going to hear me continue to talk through that. Um, so this is just a quick snapshot of vaccination rates in Polk County. The first one is, uh, really looking overall in Polk County, the average, uh, vaccination rate for twelve and older. And then the, the vaccination rate for sixteen and older. And again, that's overall Polk County. The second vaccination rate is overall for our two towns. Again, that's the overall, so that's everyone from age zero to however old uh, we have in our, within our community. So, again, that's just data to be able to share of where we are. It's one of those, and then again, one of our tools that we'll continue to talk through as we move into the school year. Next slide for me, please, Jared. This is the overall, um, just again, we're going to continue to show this, the, the positive of this. This is a current, uh, Polk County metrics, uh, specifically for the week. Uh, we don't have county Specifically for the week, we don't have county rates for this week. I think what I love about this picture, which I have not been able to say for a very long time, is that it is in the green. And it is staying in the green, both for county case rates and county test positivity. Now this will. No longer be required, but we will probably use this tool still with our Polk County Health. As we move into this school year, again, as, as I'll share, we know that we're going to get final guidance. As we move into the 21, 22 school year as we head into July here, end of July. So again, just a snapshot of that. Next slide for me. Please. Slide three, excuse me, four. This is again, just a reminder of the overall timeline. That the, as we get into the Ready School Safe Learners Guidance. We, we did receive on June 25th, the framework, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that next. But really, we are waiting for that July 22nd final guidance that will come from the state. So again, this is just that reminder. And then you can see on that bottom right corner, ongoing updates throughout the, the school year. So if, go to the next slide for me. I'm going to spend a little bit of time on the, this is the framework. So they're calling this, I call it the, the outline of what's to come. The Ready School Safe Learners Resiliency Framework. And I'm going to just go through a couple of the things that. That is listed within that. So this framework is going to be, or this framework is advisory. It's advisory for what we're currently. Doing within this, the school district. It gives the district more local authority than before. While continuing, continuing to work collaboratively with our local public health, which is Polk County. However, I just want to be clear and what we are hearing and what will come with the final guidance is that. We will be able to make decisions at the local level. For a majority of that. And again, I know I shared an email and I'll address that here in a little bit of what I shared with you this morning. To give you an example of some of the things that we're still going to have to work through. There are key areas that are included in the framework specifically. One is equity. And just generally within that, it is to ensure safety and wellness. So continuing with basic needs, food, shelter, wellness, mental health, physical health. They want us to focus, continue to focus on center health, center on health and wellbeing, excuse me. Acknowledging what we have really seen this past year. Again, I'm very appreciative for our Polk County partnership. For our mental health supports within the building. So we're going to continue that. They are very clear on centering the needs on the whole child and not solely on academics. So how do we balance that as we go back to the. What I'm going to say, the more normal than what we've been in the past. And then how do we continue to cultivate connections and relationships? There is guidance in there that goes back to required state statutes and rules. So as an example, which we have every year, there has to be a communicable disease management plan. We updated that obviously with, with a COVID-19 last year. We'll continue that. We will still have to have a process for isolating. So for students and staff who we have. Reason to believe that they may be exposed to COVID. We have to have plan and maintain for. That isolation space. So that will continue. We go back to instructional minutes. So that was waived really for the last year and a half. That goes back. We are required to administer state assessment. So all state assessment will be administered next year. And then we will reinstate the 10-day drop rule and that's specific to attendance enrollment. So if students haven't been in school for 10 days. Then they're actually dropped. Again, we do follow up with that, but that is one of the. That was one of the rules that was really waived last year. The next one is just that continued planning of mental health supports. Again, as we've talked about the. The health and wellbeing of not only our students, but our staff, continuing to build those relationships. Giving students space to be able to do that. And again, a lot of the things that we have built into our, our systems already that we will continue into. The next school year. And then the final section is the advisory health and safety strategies. I think this is where. We're still waiting to see what. Final, again, as we talk about the strategies we've, we've used in the past and we're adding that vaccination is one of the tools in our toolbox. I know there's a, a big conversation going on within the community about masks, what we'll continue to look at. You know, what the guidance comes out on the 22nd. I know that there's been some new guidance from the CDC. I know that the Oregon Department of Ed is currently looking through that. As they make that final guidance, we'll continue with the hand hygiene. That's a really important process. As we do that airflow and circulation, which our maintenance departments have done such a great job on. They're advising to, as best we can to keep cohorts because the, the spacing has narrowed really from six feet to three. So where we can do cohorts, they're wanting us to do that just in case we do have some outbreak and we can isolate those. And again, as I said, the isolation and quarantine will be part of that process. And then obviously our cleaning process as continued. So again, nothing that's new to us. I think there just could be some nuances and we'll continue to talk through. What that looks like. We will still offer testing. We've actually done testing through summer because we do have. Situations where if kids come down with symptoms, so, so the testing will continue within. That's some of the positions that we're hiring, health clerks. So we do have those options within the school district. We'll continue with our communication, not only with the community, but. With our staff and continue with the training, any changes that needs to be. And as I said, there will be. Isolation and quarantining. I think the one thing that came out and I, and I've shared this with you today, that came out late Friday. And just to give clarity on some of the things that we are going to have to work through. On Friday, we, we received clarity from the Oregon Department of Education regarding. Face masks on school buses. So school buses are considered transit. And right now, under the CDC order, that is mandatory for face coverings to be used on public trans. Transit and that applies for school districts. And that cannot be, again, that cannot be lifted. It can only be lifted by the federal government. And we cannot waive that either at the state level or at the local level. So. Again, just to continue to bring a little bit of complex. And as we make those decisions, right now that is, is one of that. However, we are building to reopen. Principals have worked hard. They are taking some time off right now, which is well needed. But we are planning on reopening, knowing that when the guidance comes out on July 22nd. We'll be able to make any adjustments and then be able to share at our August board meeting. But. Again, we're planning, moving forward to be open for those that want to be in person within our school district. Next slide for me, Jared, please. Again, we're, we're continuing or we will start up again. We've had a little bit about a month off. We will continue. Again, we're constantly talking with Polk County. Health Department, but we will start our Polk County Collaborative Meeting that starts, we have a meeting on July 28th. Just for us to get together. Again, the, the release of the final guidance on July 22nd. We think again, there could be little small nuanced changes to this, but. From the information received over the spring and then with this guidance, we're continuing to build as we move forward. And then. We will be coming with you. We've been having some good conversations about the Central Online Academy and we'll give you a full update at the August board meeting. So questions for me? Before I go into some policy.
The general indication is that, that the mask, no mask question outside of the buses will be up to local school boards. So I guess my question is, what process do you see us going through to decide that?
Again, I think. Based on how our community is, we're probably 50/50 both ways. 50%. So, so to right now, to be very honest, I think that we will be working towards that being an optional. I think one of the key things that I think we need to remember as a community is we are a diverse community. That is great, but we have to respect our differences. So I think we're already talking about campaigns about. How do we support each other for those that potentially, if we make this choice? To open it up as an option, that we are respectful of that, respectful of the kids that and staff that choose not to. Or respectful to the staff and the students who choose to. I think that. Again, that's what's great about our community, the diversity of it. But I also want to be clear that we need to respect that. If that's the choice that we end up going with, within our community and, and then how do we campaign that? So we are supporting that. I think there's more.
Less worried about what particular choice we made, but just what will. Are we thinking that we will have some vote of the board in order to make that decision? Or is that going to be? A decision you'll make as, as an administration and we'll be behind you on that?
Yeah, I would believe that we will make that as an administrative team and then bring it to the board. Again, we've already been having, starting to have conversations about that. Again, because of the diversity of our board, I, excuse me, of our community. I think that. I think everyone can be respectful and that we can do it in a very positive way. So that's again, we haven't, because again, I've given some space to my administrators. They needed it. We have had some internal high-level conversations. Even some, how would we approach this from a campaign standpoint to be supportive of everyone? I do think one of the things that Polk County has shared with me, the cases that are. Coming forward. And again, this is a data point. It is not my view, but my job is to give data. That 98% of the cases of COVID are coming from unvaccinated people. Again, K-5 is completely unvaccinated. So again, we're waiting to see also, like I said, the CDC has some guidance coming out, Oregon Department of Ed. Again, there's been some communications on the news about what might be coming. Polk County has also shared with me, the Delta variant is 50% more transmittable than the previous COVID. Original COVID, I should say, we have so many different versions now. But I think all of that is, we're going to take that to continue to take that in consideration. I will be very honest, I, I think that, and I'm going to share this with the community, there could be a point. That if things were to get. Case levels go up. Could you see potentially mandatory masks coming back? Possibly. I think you're starting to hear a little bit of that conversation. I wouldn't say that word there because again, looking in the green, that's a positive thing. From a Polk County standpoint, I think if we can continue in that direction, we're going to continue to tell parents, please keep. Your students home. We're going to tell our staff, please stay home if you are sick because we did a great job of that. Last year. So again, those are just some of the things that we'll continue to, to talk through. But, but Don, to be very honest, I. You know, we are such a diverse community. I think we're going to get a mix going out. So I think that's why we're looking right now potentially, what is that optional piece?
Yes, Jen.
This is more of a policy question. And as board members, we may certainly have opinions about the whole mask thing. But. Are we going to? Make a policy? Because if it's not, it sounds to me like it's an operational decision, which. We don't have any role in. And so, and I, I didn't think it would be a policy decision. Certainly, I think our opinions are important. But when it comes right down to it, it is an operational decision, not a board decision. Is that correct?
Can I, can I respond to that?
Yeah, please, because it's a question.
Giving this a lot of thought. And I think that. When, back in December, when the rules of the road changed and decisions were delegated to local districts, it really put us in an awkward position. Some school boards turned operational issues like this into policy discussions that we're voting on very specific things like. You know, returning to in-person instruction. Now, now the issue is masks. That's going to be the lightning issue.
Alright.
We as a board have been treating these as operational issues that the superintendent with the cabinet can make those decisions. But I think we have to think about, how do we navigate this environment in such a way that we bring everybody along? We all have constituents that we also are trying to represent.
Right.
So there should be a point in the process, I think, where we are sharing our points of view on behalf of those that we represent. So somehow between now and August, if we're going to be making decisions in August, I think it behooves us to do some polling to do. You know, get a sense from however you want to do that of where your constituents are at. And, and you know, it's open for discussion, but somehow provide that to the superintendent, either between now and the next board meeting. Or even at the next board meeting, if we want to have a more thorough discussion.
I think it's an excellent idea.
And, and again, I think that there is also still the guidance that comes out on the 22nd, which could give us a little bit more direction, which. We'll make sure that is clearly shared with you all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Right, that.
Yeah, Steve.
Yeah, thank you, Steve, for that.
Your comment was sort of right where I was trying to get to is, right now, if you listen to the news at all. It's, I mean, even coming from OED, it's up to school board, local school boards and local school districts to make these decisions. And so I'm pretty sure all of our inboxes will start to light up here very soon. They've already started a little bit. And, and so I was just trying to get some clarity for what that process looks like. So people know what to expect.
Yeah.
That if they want to have an input. They can have that input by contacting one of us or should all that go to Jen or? How, how do we want to manage that decision-making process? So that everybody has a chance to have their input and, and we make a rational decision based on that.
That's exactly why I asked the question I did because, you know, I also have read that school board policy, but. We don't have a policy.
Right.
And so will we make a policy? Do we make, yeah. I like your idea, Steve.
Yes. Byron?
So a, a comment, and I think, I think whatever, and I think we've done a good job thus far of, of making sure that we. That we're looking at the data on the subset of. Population that we're, that we're looking at here. You know, we can't just use the general population to drive our decisions. We need to look at. What's actually happening in the schools. So I think, you know, making sure that we're transparent with. You know, the board as well as the, the community about, okay, what's, what's driving these decisions one way or the other. I think is very important. I have a question about something you, you mentioned. And. That, that 10-day.
The 10-day drop, yes.
Is that 10 consecutive days?
Correct. Yes. So that's, yes.
And then these compulsory, let's say somebody comes down with symptoms. And you could say these are going to be compulsory absences.
That's what I'm.
Towards the 10 days?
That's what I'm expecting to have the, that's not, they haven't been clear on that, but I think that that will be an excused. COVID, again, I think that that's some of the clarity we'll get on July 22nd. The, the guidance is, the framework is pretty short. But I'm assuming that that would be part of that because again, we'll, we'll continue that. So if it's an excuse, here this, an excused absence, which a sickness. By a parent or if we have, you know, conversation with a, a family member and then verify that with Polk County, which is our process. Then that would be considered excused.
And we'll figure out a way for that. Student to get the work.
Correct.
Keep up with the rest of the class. We're telling them to stay at home.
Correct. Which is, again, I think that's some of the good learning that we had with our. Teachers last year and, and some of the, the project-based learning, the different things that they were, were able to do with our students. So we're. Yeah, we're, we're, those are going to be parts of the, just how we continue to build that as we move forward.
Thank you.
Did you have any other thoughts about, you know, receiving input from the board based upon what I said?
So a couple of options, I think, as, and I want to always share with the community. Because we do, do collect it, the info at Central, that is the best. If you want to give us your input by via email. You can do it there. I think that's one of the, the, the great tool. We can collect that data. Just to be able to share with the board. I do think if they, if you have. People that would like to reach out with, to you directly to be able to do that as well. And we've talked about a, a survey, but again, as, as, as our surveys continue to show us within our community, we are. Times a 50/50 split. And that's, again, that's what I love about our, our community. I think we are.
What was the last survey that we did? Because I'm just wondering.
Was the online score.
The online, but I'm wondering how the vaccination plays into this. I don't know that it's 50/50 anymore. I know that it was last year and I'm, I'm. I'm wondering if, if things have changed. And, and how do we get that input into this decision-making process? I mean, we, we can try to provide it or.
We can, again, we can look at developing a short survey. Specific to masks and get it out to the community and leave it up for several weeks. We can message it out to all families and point them to the right direction.
One of the districts just did that.
Yeah, I'm, people are doing different versions of that.
What would we do with that data? I mean.
I would bring it to you.
Once you, once you ask the question, if you don't do something with the information.
What my response would be depending on, I would look at that with my leadership team.
Okay.
And that could be combination of my cabinet leadership as well as my principal leader. And that could be combination of my cabinet leadership as well as my principal leadership, potentially conversations with our union leadership, because again, as we built this, we're collaborative with the key groups, that includes all of you as well. And then we would, you know, based off of that input, be able to make those decisions again, if it's, you know, I don't want to speculate what that would, would say, but again, I think that, I think it's going to be diverse. A, a mix. I would want to make sure that we get it to all the communities. We have a large Spanish speaking and, and we continue to reach out to them, so we want to be able to hear all voices, which again, you all represent.
Do we think our surveys have been actually representative of our various constituencies, or do they come back kind of biased? Or do we know?
I, I, so we, because of the way we gather it, because we want it to be anonymous, I think that's a difficult. I, I don't know that I could answer that one.
Yeah, I, I don't know if the survey is, it's a good idea or not. I was, I was trying to think through that.
Well, I think that we might be. Sorry. Go ahead, Steve.
Well, I, I think it's important if you are going to survey, you understand what you're doing with the data, but I, I.
If, if it came back, for instance, that it was thirty percent no mask, seventy percent masks, are we going to do anything differently? I mean, as long as we have a significant portion of people that don't want masks and a significant people do, we're going to have to find some middle road to, to go down. So.
It also depends on how many people answer. You know, if you get twenty answers, that's not exactly.
It's not a fair representation.
Typical approach. I, I would also, if we do this, would suggest that the OEA or the CEA and OSEA people be asked what their opinion might be.
Absolutely.
That's, that's a given, right? That, that is ongoing, and that's absolutely.
I think it's important, those are the people that work with the kids.
Correct.
They're the pros on kids, so.
And, and again, from a vaccination, just to, sorry, Vidal, but just to add to this, because from a vaccination standpoint, again, there's a difference. If, if I'm exposed as, because I am vaccinated, if I am exposed, if I sit next to Steve for more than fifteen minutes and he were to get it, because I'm vaccinated, I don't have to quarantine. So there are, I mean, again, there are some advantages of continuing to work that, not all, again, both from staff and students, not everyone can be vaccinated, and we acknowledge that. And we know that that is a personal choice, and some people cannot do that. And so continuing to, again, that's what I'm going to keep saying, that's why the diversity of our community is great. I think we can do this collectively together, where everybody can be successful. That's students, that's staff, that's our community. So, again, we'll continue to talk about that. You know.
Hey, just one quick question, Jen.
Go ahead, Vidal.
What my question was in regards to the, being able to, to tally up surveys. If we have so many that were turned in in Spanish and so many were turned on in English, is, is there a way to track that? Wouldn't that be a, a representation of of our two communities?
Correct, and we, and we do do that, because all of our surveys since last year have been both in English and Spanish. So yes.
Right. Okay.
As, as far as grade level goes, because in, in my experience, if you were to send out a survey to an entire district, it's, it's, it's you, you will get a heavier response from elementary parents than you will from high school parents. And so is, do we track grade level?
We, some of our surveys do ask for them to put in, you know, what grade level or grade levels their students are in. Yes, we have done that in the past. So we'll talk through that and, and you know, we'll, we'll give an update to you all of, of where potentially we will move forward with that. But again, to be very honest with where our community is, I think the option of optional is not a bad choice. I think how we work collectively together so everyone is successful. I think that could be a really good avenue for us to build upon moving into the school year.
So I would suggest that, that, you know, coming out of this meeting, that that's what we maybe test with constituents, and then if we hear some, you know, positive support of that, that we share that back with the superintendent, however you want to do that.
I would agree, I would agree with that.
Just helps to guide, guide the decision-making.
We should have a common questionnaire for all of us to use. And a an email list of the people in our zones. I don't know how I would get to everybody in zone five.
Yeah, I don't know that you're, I'm suggesting it to everyone, but just a representative sample.
People in our zone?
Yeah.
We don't, I, we wouldn't have school records by zone.
I wouldn't think.
Somebody is trying to overlay the map on.
Yeah, but trying to get to constituents, I mean, I know a lot of them, but I mean, it's on five of them.
I actually think it's optional, right? The, the board, it's an opportunity to try to be proactive and reach out and get a, get a sense of where people are at.
Yeah, but how do we do it if we don't have a list?
I go door to door, talk to friends, I mean.
Door, Facebook, community chat.
This is the dilemma, though. This is the dilemma that, that we're trying to, you know, base our decision upon the, where the community is at. We are representing the community, and we're being put in this position by ODE, where we are perceived as the decision-makers.
Right. I absolutely agree with what you're saying, Steve. I just, and I know that Vidal just said Facebook, et cetera, but you still have to know who the people are in your zone. I mean, sending it out as a whole district is grand. And now if people know what zone they live in, we could ask them to identify what zone are they in.
Is it really important to know the zone? I mean, I don't bother, if somebody comes to me and says, I want to talk to you about the school board, I don't typically ask them whether they're in my zone or not, I just listen.
No, but I thought this discussion was that we would try to reflect the opinions of the people in our zone. If, if it's not that, then, then we do what we've been doing, and that's present a survey to everybody, but we don't know. You know, what Steve was saying is that the people in our zones elected us.
Well, well, actually, the whole community elected us, and so I think we are elected to represent all students. And so if we.
Yeah, I agree.
Family, if we run into somebody that has a question, or we could just ask them. I don't think, I don't think zone matters.
Well, I don't ask them either. Say, oh, excuse me, I can't answer that because you're not on five. I don't do that, but if we're talking about trying to get an honest-to-goodness scientific data point.
We're just trying to get a pulse of the community.
That's a whole different thing.
And, and my.
We're trying to do.
Go ahead. I, again, my poll says we are
split.
Split, and I think that if we can, and again, I see Byron, I would just say from what I'm getting, from what we're getting through info, from the conversations that we're having, I think if we can come up with a viable option to be optional with respecting each other, I think we could be very successful.
And great points made. I think there are some questions that are best left to data, and some questions that are best left to getting the pulse of the community. And I think in, in this case, a community poll that's not going to be scientific in any way, shape or form is going to simply muddy the waters. And I think, I think you do have a good understanding of what's going on in the community. And I think if we can see, you know, what the risk really is by the historical numbers that we're experiencing and where they're trending and that kind of thing, that's really going to drive a decision that's based on fact, that, that we can defend. And if it comes to us for a decision, and we are the decision-makers that we can defend and, and go to bat for and say, look, this isn't an opinion, these are the numbers that are driving this decision one way or the other. Is it safe or not safe? So that's my thought on it.
How many options do we actually have? Because it seems like either, either we're going to say.
I think we have two options. Everybody's required.
Have to wear a mask, or it's optional. Those are the only two choices we have. We can't make people not wear a mask.
Again, I think one of my, just I'm waiting for, because again, the CDC guidance and conversations between the Oregon Department of Ed and the Oregon Health Authority, and again, like I said, this is a fact from Polk County. And again, you're seeing of the current cases that are COVID-positive, thirty-two percent of those are zero to nineteen. Again, that was shared with me last week from Polk County. Again, the ninety-eight percent of those cases that are positive are unvaccinated. And again, it doesn't, I'm not, it is a tool in the toolbox, I'm going to continue to say that, because not everyone has the ability to get vaccinated, but those are against just some of those numbers. But I think, again, going back to, we're going to keep the hand hygiene, we're doing the social distancing of three feet as best as possible with where we can in the schools, cohorting, you know, just being, giving spaces for kids if they need a mass break. I mean, again, our students that have been in schools have are used to that, or know those routines. I, I do think we've learned some great things. I mean, even our staff and some of the things about how we get in line and giving kids space, we have less issues, less disciplinary issues. Like, we've learned a lot, continue to learn a lot as we, as we went through this last year. So a, again, I think that I, again, as a superintendent, as continuing to have conversations with the community, I do think I, we are leaning more towards, and I'm talking just specifically with my administrative team, again, continuing to have conversations with both of our unions, because they're are part of this collaborative discussion, but I do think that could be a viable option. Again, as long as everybody can be respectful and know that everybody has a unique situation, and we don't always know why someone is wearing a mask, or why, you know, if they're not, we want to believe that they've taken the right steps to keep themselves safe and others safe.
Any other comments?
Great, Courtney.
Yeah, it's a good discussion.
It is.
Okay, let's go into the policy updates.
I have a couple of policies. So we are, I'm going to step back, because we're trying to get back to normal processes within the school board. So before COVID hit in March of two thousand nineteen, we had gone through most of our policies. If you remember, we had OSBA do a dive into our policies, and we, it really took us two years to update all of those policies that we are behind. Emily and I are, are now moving forward with policies that again, are either were part of last year that came in November and this past June, but then also starting to look at our policies that may be out of date, et cetera. So some of that is this today of us starting to go through our policies where we have, there has not been an update for quite some time. So our first one, which we have done three times in the last two years, because it does continue to change, is GBDA, it's a personnel issue, expression of milk in the workplace. Most of these change, changes are based on language specific to equity and removing things like mother friendly, because again, that's, that is not all, parents are just a mother. And normal important roles for mothers as an example, because again, we have diverse families. So that is really specifically that, those changes within the document, and we have to document generally in each of the schools where those areas are. So we got clarity from all the schools and built that into the policy. The next one's IIBGA, it's tied to instruction. This is specific to electric, electronic communication systems. And you're going to hear more updating about just some of our technology things as we go through this next year. So this is just part of it, it cleans up and clarifies some of the language. This really hadn't been updated since two thousand fifteen, so we felt it was an important policy to start with. The next one, JGA, students, specific to corporal punishment. Again, we don't do it, it's not part of our process, it is a policy that we have, so it simplifies definitions and expectations, but it hasn't been updated. The last update was two thousand and eleven. Next one, JHCA slash JHCB, specific to students. This is immunization, physical exams, vision screening, eye exams and dental. Again, this is housekeeping language, a lot tied to COVID-nineteen. So again, just, we had updated that in two thousand sixteen, but most of it's more communicable diseases. Next one is JFCM students. This is specific to threats of violence, where we do have potential disciplinary issues. Again, it's referencing some of the new ORSs. It, we have removed, as we are trying to continue to remove the gender-specific language in all of our policy to make it equitable. And then we had some additional brackets that were new that we needed to decide on, so that, and again, this was last updated in two thousand and eleven. And then the last one is EEA, support services, student transportation services. This is really aligning our grades. So our policy said elementary students were K eight. Our elementary students are K five, so we've updated that language within the policy and then referenced secondary students as defined as six twelve, not just nine twelve. And again, that's the major changes of that. So that is just the update, and we will continue to do that. If we do have board members that are interested at times when there are larger changes, we do pull together no more than three of you. So if you have interest in being on a policy subcommittee, there are times that myself and Emily Mensah, who's also our school, excuse me, our board secretary, we do want some guidance from you. Sometimes we take policies to our staff, sometimes we take them to our students. Some of that work will continue, but there are times that I do. So if you do have an interest, and I'll put this in the Friday report of being part of that, because we will start to put a few dates on the calendar, just to have them reserved in case we need them with a small board subcommittee. That is it for me.
Very good. As far as the board report, then, just wanted to call out that we have scheduled a retreat for August twenty-third. And wanted to make sure that you were all aware of that, and have you checked your calendars real quick? This would be an extended meeting, one to six. Several things that we want to cover, you know, kind of a new board, coming back together again, looking at our operating agreements, and.
One to six.
One to six.
Correct. There.
I was going to say, if, I mean, we had some correspondence about some of the OSBA stuff that you've been participating in, and shared that we might incorporate some of that into this retreat. Part of what we're, what Janet, Emily are doing is also looking at some of the OSBA training materials for boards, and we'll be taking some selected material into the board meeting, and I think we can certainly still shape the agenda. I mean, it is our time to work on the stuff that we think is most important to set the stage for the next year. So do you want to add anything from what you were, you sent in the email in terms of what you've been learning?
Oh, I, so this, the OSBA summer conference, I went to a few days ago. And fantastic, I love that I can, I have to say, do it from my couch. But great to see people, they had great topics, they had a lot of youth voices was, I'm not sure the full like name of the class or the session they did, but that was absolutely amazing. There's a lot of stuff on equity that, like just digging into it deeper, which was pretty good. And then I specifically in my email was about board culture, and I'm not sure the other name. It was like had two. And there was just great information, though, that I actually didn't know. And I've read Robert's rule, and and so it was, I think it was really beneficial for the board to kind of take a deeper step into that, and how we're going to kick off this new year, you know, this new year, and then being active change agents for our communities of care, I think is huge. Which I'm also taking a course on the side about that, so it's really fantastic.
That's good for, thanks, thanks for sending that email, that suggestion, so we'll, we'll incorporate that.
The other thing that I would add is, speaking of youth voices, and again, getting back, like, we need to elect youth, I mean, we have normally had, since my second year, two youth representatives, so I do want to talk through that. I think we could do a expediated version in September and get them brought on board by October. So again, that'll be another one of our potential topics as we go through just a review of that, so.
That would be great.
Do all board members have access to like the videos that?
If you sign up for it, you do, but from the conversations that we've had with them, and again, we're going to review, because Emily and I both signed up for it, so I, we both have full access to the videos. If we can share out, there could be some pre reviewing we may do, if we can share those videos to be prepared for. Again, I'm starting to go through those just to see which ones I think would be really good for us. Again, to reestablish what our, what our focus is and our goals. I think we need to talk about, again, we'll, we'll do that with this board and superintendent agreement. I do think we need to also talk about my evaluation and making sure that we're clear on that process, so that's public as well. I do think we need to also talk about my evaluation and making sure that we're clear on that process. So, that's public as well.
And we've talked about just getting back to our strategic plan and just
Very much.
Just getting back on track with what we had set out to accomplish before COVID hit. So, that'll be a big piece of the retreat.
The new policies that I talked about in there or that was, came up in, I think, the legal section that I took. I had no idea we're actually, do we ever, they come down to us from OSBA? Is that how it works?
Yes. So, if there's any new policies that at times is in collaboration between the Oregon Department of Education and OSBA.
So, it kind of trickles down.
Correct. With that, doesn't mean that we can't develop policies that we feel are specific to our school district. We have the ability to do that as well. Yeah, like we're one of only few that is trauma-informed, has a trauma-informed policy. I think there's three of us. Correct.
Okay, that's it for the board report. That brings us to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda is made up of our minutes from last month, personal recommendations and policy second reading. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Don. Thank you, Jan.
Can I ask a quick question?
You may.
Sort of, it's related, but it may not be appropriate during the discussion time. I was just looking at the personnel recommendations. Are we able to hire? Like we wanted to, or are we having trouble hiring people or how's that going?
We, we are doing well. I think there's some nuances that we're always working through. Again, special education is always a, one of those key areas, but we've done a really good job in hiring some of that staff. We do have still a fair amount of open positions, but we are filling. We have a payroll one that we're going back out for again. I mean, there are some unique ones that we need specific skills. But for the most part, I, I think our principals and then obviously the staff that we're filling at the district office, we feel really confident in the hiring that we're getting to do. So, I think that speaks just great about our, what our schools are doing and that we're getting high-quality candidates across the, the board.
Thanks. Good question. Any other comments? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please raise your right hand, or if at all, if you're still there, if you want to. Okay, that passes unanimously. And that brings us to our business agenda. So, I'll turn it back over to the superintendent.
So, the only, and we tabled this last time, there is no change to it. But attached in your packet is the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two board calendar. Again, this identifies our meetings for the year, obviously beginning today. It also reflects trying to get back to what we were before pre-COVID, which is, and every other month, either retreat or PLC, beginning in August with an, our, obviously that annual retreat that's on the twenty-third. And then October, December and February for board PLCs with April, May, additional meetings for budget committee. I will say that as we get into the retreat, if we feel, you know, as we've done in the past, we can always adjust this if we do need to have additional meetings. And I think we could talk through that for our August retreat. But this is really to get out to the public of when our meetings will be, et cetera, for the school year. So, if there's any other questions, I would just ask for a motion to approve, please.
I move to approve the board of directors' calendar.
Thank you, yeah. Thank you, Darcy. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of approving the twenty-one, twenty-two board of directors' calendar as presented? Please raise your right hand. Passes unanimously. Brings us to.
I'm gonna actually turn the next few over to Cease for a couple of proposals and then just some designations of our, what we do every year for finance, our finances.
Yes, thank you. The first item tonight, and I'm sorry, apparently there was a piece that was missing out of your packet because I wanted to kind of give you a history of what is leading up to this proposal that we have to provide commercial real estate consulting and brokerage services. On March sixteenth of two thousand and twenty, an auspicious time, the board reviewed the district's long-range facility plan and looked at short-term property needs and enacted resolution two thousand and twenty-three declaring two of our properties as surplus property. That is the property known as the Oak Grove property and also the property known as the Ola property, formerly elementary schools that have been unused for many years. And at that time, we did a request for proposals to potential buyers. Our attorney, John Hasbrook, has worked through many potential issues of property easement, transfers rights. These are both properties that have been in the district for generations. So, on June eighth, two thousand and twenty, proposals were reviewed. The Ola property received no bids. The Oak Grove property received one bid, which was deemed non-competitive. And district staff determined it was not a good time to focus on remarketing those properties. So, in March of two thousand and twenty-one, in order to get professional assistance in marketing the properties, the district issued another request of proposal. This was for real estate consulting and brokerage services. So, in other words, to hire professionals to really help ferret out who might be appropriate purchasers of those properties. And we had determined that we would award a bid by May third or until a qualified and competitive proposal was submitted. No proposals were submitted by the deadline. However, a qualified and competitive proposal was received recently from the Hanson Property Group from Albany. And I included that proposal in the packet and included references. We have been in touch with those references. They have been very strong. Not just indicating that, that this particular Realtor has experience, not only with commercial properties, but actually with public properties. So, has performed work both for Lynn Benton Community College and, can I get the other one there, the city of Albany? And they both indicated that it wasn't just sort of listing services or buyer representation services. The Hanson Group has consulted on a variety of property types of transactions and analysis and needs. So, sounds like a good fit for us. And at this time, possible actions would be to accept the proposal and direct staff to work with them on district real estate needs, to reopen the RFP, to try and engage more proposals from real estate consultants or brokerages, to reengage efforts to market the properties on our own without professional services or to take no action. So, at this time, the suggested motion is to, the staff suggestion is to accept the proposal from Hanson Property Group and direct us to enter into a contract. And that would go through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-two with possible extensions if other services became needed.
And we're not paying them anything on retainer or anything. It's strictly.
Their proposal is a six percent commission.
Okay, all entertain a motion.
We adopt the Hanson Property Group Central School District proposal. Request for what's the, what's the suggestion? I move to accept the proposal from Hanson Property Group to provide real estate consulting and brokerage services to the central school district and direct staff to enter into a contract through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two with possible extensions.
Thank you, Byron. Peggy has seconded. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion as presented, please raise your right hand. Great. And I think it's back to you, Cece. As you're multitasking.
I am multitasking. Put away the word document. The other document. These next two items are pro forma. They are two items that we are required to do at the beginning of each fiscal year. And the first one would be to designate authorized persons. These are the people who will be able to conduct business on behalf of the district. And so, that typically consists of the chair, the vice chair, and then the superintendent as well as director of finance and operations. We also asked that you designate Jason Clark as our director of planning and project management. He has been able to be more engaged in signing some contracts in, in reviewing district documents. And often a good idea to have an extra person available. That resolution is available for you to review.
Do I hear a motion?
I move, we adopt the operating, operating resolution authorizing positions as presented.
Sorry, missed that. Second. Thank you, Byron. Thank you, Peggy. Any other questions? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That passes unanimously.
And the last one is to designate professional services. These are the folks who we use for auditing our insurance carriers, our insurance broker and attorneys. We have sort of two specialists. One is general counsel to the district and the other, which is John Hasbrook. And then we use the Hungerford Law Firm in matters of personnel, in negotiations and specifically expertise in special education. Our audit firm, Bolt Carlisle Smith, has been acquired by a national fir, regional firm, Senior LeWak. And we continue with PACE, the property and casualty in education trust. That literally is a, an insurance trust that provides those services to ninety-nine percent of the districts in the state. Those that are not self-insured are through PACE. And currently, we continue through the special districts to receive our workers' comp insurance. Since before I arrived.
So, do we ever go out for bid for?
We should, yes. Yeah, that's practices to do that about every five years.
We should do that.
That would, next year. That's something I would like to do. Get some additional capacity.
I move, we adopt the operating resolution selecting auditors, insurance carriers, insurance broker and attorneys as presented.
Thank you, Don. Is there a question?
Can I suggest that, that we perhaps amend the motion to do an RFP next year for a new auditor?
Is this an appropriate place to put that or not?
Yeah, it's not really a resolution. You can certainly suggest, get consensus to direct us to do that. But in this case, it's not really.
Email Cece and copy all of us.
Make sure she gets it in the minute, minutes there. Now, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Peggy.
We hear you.
I think we got that. Okay, all in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. And that passes unanimously. Let's see, that brings us to our closing comments by individual board members. Do we have any comments today?
The short comment, I agree with Jan. I thought tonight's board meeting was a good balance of information and discussion. And felt like progress was made and good interaction.
Yeah, it was nice to be back together, not on Zoom. I think we could have better conversations this way. So, it's, it's good to be, it's good to be.
Oh, you go right ahead.
I would like to share, I'm not sure if this was public in any way, but Jennifer recently was, you've got a board position with OSAA, is that correct?
COSA.
Okay, COSA. Yeah. And then also, what was the other one you got? Is this something?
Sure, I was selected to sit on the COSA Equity Board, which is, I'm very excited and honored to do that. And then I will also be sitting on the, every four years, OSAA, which is the athletics and activities go through reclassification and boundary. So, I will be sitting as the five A representative on that committee throughout the year.
I just thought that would be something that, for some of the comments that came up here also earlier, that people, good information. And then also that Vidal, I just heard is going to be possibly put on a committee with OSB, is it finances?
Yeah, I think there's an interest yet.
Which I think is pretty cool, too.
Great. Thanks, Darcy. Jan, did you have something?
I just wanted to thank our speaker tonight for coming and sharing his thoughts with the board. And that would be the gentleman who talked about things they'd like us to consider. I also want to acknowledge Ed Probst for coming forward. And I have seen him teach. I know what he's talking about. I think that if we could possibly do that, what he requested is an excellent idea. So, I, I think it's, it speaks well for our citizenry when someone comes to the board and speaks. And I'm happy that we live in a democracy.
Thank you, Jan. Yes, you made, Darcy.
Um, I am going to need all of your help, being the vice chair. And so, if that's an open dialogue, I would love to be able to reach out to any of you when I so need. I've got it.
There you go. Okay.
I've been reading.
You can train me. Okay, we are journeying into executive session tonight. So, under the provision of ORS one nine two dot six six, so open meeting law, the board of directors will enter in a, to executive session for the following purpose, to conduct deliberations with persons designated to carry on labor negotiations under ORS one nine two dot six six oh two D. Specific information discussed in executive session shall not be made public and shall remain undisclosed. The board may return to open meeting to take action on executive session discussion if needed, but that is not expected tonight. So, we are adjourned from our public meeting and are now in executive session. Actually, we'll take a one-minute recess and then we'll meet you back.
Yeah, we can go in here.